And get started. So, welcome everyone. I'm Rebecca Hawthorne, President of the League of Women Voters of Lake Minnetoka Plymouth Area, and I'm delighted to welcome tonight's guest speakers as well as members of both the Lake Minnetoka Plymouth Area League and the Minnetoka Eden Prairie Hopkins League as well. Community members have joined us and students as well to this evening's event as we gear up for the upcoming school year and the 2025 School Board Elections. So with our speaker's permission, we are recording this meeting and we will post it on our website and YouTube channel for community viewing. I ask that you mute yourself during the meeting and please type any questions you might have in the chat. Because we have such a large audience tonight, Leslie Gillette will be monitoring the chat for us and then asking your questions on your behalf during the Q and A after we hear from our speakers. So, a little bit of background regarding our local school boards before we begin. According to the National School Board Association, the primary role of a school board, a local school board, is to establish the vision and the goals for the public schools in their district and to set standards for the schools and superintendents. So, most school board members are elected by people in their community to represent their values, their views, and their desires for the public schools. It's important to recognize that traditionally, school board directors have been perceived as nonpartisan community leaders. In our current highly polarized society, school board service is now perceived by some through a political lens, impacting the work of our school board members. So these days, school board members are truly the unsung heroes in our communities. Serving on a school board is an act of community leadership, civic commitment, and it requires a thick skin. So this evening, we are honored to hear from four local school leaders. Patrick Lee O'Halloran, Chair of the Minnetoka School Board is with us. Superintendent Christine Flescher of the Orno Public Schools. Superintendent Chase Anderson of the Wayzata Public Schools. And Heidi Marty, Vice Chair of the West Tonka School Board. Minnetoka, Wayzata, and West Tonka are holding school board elections this November. Orno elected new school board members last November. Now, these four districts are very different, yet they all work to ensure that their students reach the standards set by the Minnesota Department of Education, while school districts are accountable to the Minnesota Department of Education. The oversight of the board members actually comes from the voters, a rather complicated relationship. So we're going to start tonight by asking our four school leaders a number of questions. We'll have all four of them respond, and then we'll open it up to audience questions. So you may want to put it on speaker view so you can hear our speakers as they respond to questions or manage to find them on your screen. So the first question we'd like to ask our school leaders, what motivates you to work in public education? And how long have you served your community in your current role? And I'd like to start with Patrick from the Minnetoka School Board. Patrick, would you answer that question for us, please?
I'll do my best. So, I'll take it backwards. I'm in my fourth year on the school board, which, as it turns out, is going to be my last year. My seat will be up, but I'm not running. And I've been involved in my school district for longer than that.
Please, please make sure that you are on mute. Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
It's all right. I was hoping I wasn't missing something. Yeah, so I've been involved, obviously, in my community longer than that. I moved to the Minnetoka Schools 17 years ago when my daughter was beginning kindergarten. We followed the open enrollment so that she could be part of the Chinese immersion program. And really, for me, serving the public schools is part of my belief that public schools need to be focused on the mission of educating all of our students. Public schools are public, open for everyone. We need to let everyone in our doors and give them the best education we can possibly accomplish within our resources. And so, I worked, prior to being on the school board, helping to lobby the legislature and do other things to try and make sure that we have the resources we need. As anyone involved in school district politics knows, that is a work, that is a constant job, right? We're always going to have to interface with the legislature because a big source of our funding comes from the state of Minnesota. And that's a job that never ends. And I imagine I'll still be involved in that when I'm off the board. But on the board, really, my motivation is the project of educating our students. I liked your comments earlier in the call about, traditionally, it's a nonpartisan role, right? I mean, certainly, you can read the headlines anywhere around the country in the last five years about this or that activity going on in school boards. And there's been that opportunity during the pandemic. That was certainly happening in our community as well. There'd be a lot of excitement about issues that, in some sense, wasn't really critical to the mission, but we had to get through a pandemic together. But for me, it's not about my goal or my project that I bring. Like, it's not about joining a school board to accomplish a mission of tilting it to the right or to the left, or banning a book or allowing a book. To me, it's about listening to each other on the board and listening to the community and really doing the best you can for the education of the students in the schools. And maybe a little broader than students, because we also all have community education roles and oversight of that as well. So it's really the role of the school district in your community and that partnership with your community members about what's important to them and how do we do the best with the resources we have to keep the project of a school district moving forward and for the best education of our members.
Thank you, thank you. Christine, how about you? What motivates you to work in public education? And how long have you served your community in your current role?
Thank you, and thank you for having me tonight. I'm excited to be here. I have been in Orno schools now for 32 years. I've been the current superintendent for five and in public education for 34 years. But I grew up with my parents who were both teachers, third generation, so education was the family business. It's often what we talked about in the evenings and around the dinner table. And if it wasn't, if we weren't talking about education, we were still talking about, I would say, the mission of public service. And it was very much something that I learned from my parents, that, you know, spending your life in service was important. And when I, I'm the only non-teacher in my background, is I'm a school psychologist by training. So I'm very passionate about creating systems where kids thrive. I think that's what public education is about, is, you know, as I think Patrick did a really nice job about talking about all kids, making sure all kids are thriving. That's why I loved being a school psychologist. I worked for 12 years as a psychologist and the Director of Special Services in Orno for 17. So I'm very passionate about children in general. I'm also a parent to two Orno Spartans, and they are now at the high school. So I've watched them go through the whole system as an Orno parent as well. And watching those experiences come to life in my children as well is both rewarding. And I think it gives you a lot of, it's a great feedback loop as a parent, and to see those things that you hope happen occur in kids' lives. So I believe strongly in public education and just grateful to be here.
Thank you so much. Chase?
Thank you, Rebecca, and good evening, everybody. I appreciate having an opportunity to be a part of this meeting tonight. So I'm currently Superintendent in Wayzata Schools. I'm starting my 18th year in that role and my 43rd year in education, 41 of which have been in public education. I spent two years as the administrator for the Rochester Montessori School. So I had a dose of private school and pre-K. Before I became a superintendent, I had 25 years of experience in the field of education, which has been very helpful. I started as a science teacher in Bellevue, Nebraska. I worked in Rochester for two years, Burnsville for two years as an assistant principal at the middle school level, 16 years in Edina, and now 17 years and counting in Wayzata. And I've always enjoyed being a part of young people's lives and having an opportunity every day when you go to work to shape and provide direction and guidance and establish systems and academic programs, support programs that help enrich each and every student that's in our district. And this year, we'll welcome, for the first time ever, over 13,000 students into our school district, grades K through 12. So it's a huge responsibility, not just for me, but all that shared responsibility with our building administrators, our district administrators, our school boards, and of course, all the teachers and staff. It's a big enterprise and one that we love showing up to every day. In fact, I'm fresh out of five orientation sessions with parents of incoming kindergarten students that we conducted at our high school tonight. And it was really fun to visit with them briefly, and they had a chance to take a bus ride. I think for me, I decided probably as a junior in high school that I wanted to commit my career to education. And I had a few times, maybe early on in my college days, thinking, oh, maybe I should think about doing this. But it always came back to education and having that opportunity in a career to really have an impact every day on the future of our country.
Great, thank you so much. And last but not least, Heidi Marty.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. I am at West Tonka. I've been on the West Tonka Board since 2017. I don't have the teaching background. I just have an intense support and interest in improving our public schools. I got on our board particularly at a time where our board was really having some difficulty with a very polarized, divided board. And it was really important to me to get involved, get more involved. I have been involved in parent groups and referendum groups, but it was really important to me that we had a board that had the best interests of our students in mind and at heart, for real. And it was very obvious at that time that that was lacking. And so it was really clear to me that that was a path that I wanted to take and to really work hard to support our teachers, to, you know, make the improvements that I knew we needed. And so that's kind of how I got started with it. It's been incredibly gratifying in the time that I've been on to see so many incremental improvements with a supportive, unified board. We don't always agree, but there's no, it's not a, you know, partisan stuff doesn't come into it, everybody's on the same page. We are making, you know, we have, some of our staff, some of our main administrative staff have been with us for 15, 20, 25, 30 years. We have a solid staff of people that are really dedicated, really know what's going on, and we're just moving ahead so wonderfully that it's just, it's really been very, it's just been a joy to be a part of it and to help move things along in our district.
Excellent, thank you so much. Second question, I'd love to hear from each of you, one or two responsibilities of the school board that are real responsibilities as perhaps what are assumed by the public to be the responsibility. So when you think about your school board responsibilities, or for those of you who are superintendents, what you are looking to your board for? Could you give us a little bit of insight? And Heidi, let's start with you in terms of what you see as being the responsibilities of the school board members.
Well, one main thing is we keep an eye on the budget. We rely on our admin team a lot for that, but that's something we are constantly being updated. I mean, I've talked to some other board members in other districts, and when that doesn't happen, there are huge problems, right? So if you have that information, if you're getting that information from your business director and the admin team, you know, you can make these decisions and you can keep yourself on track. We, the policy, I'm on the policy committee, a big part of what we do is talk about strategic goals, either checking in on ones that have been made. And just recently, for us, we've been in the process of setting our new strategic goals that covers everything from technology, safety, mental health, and of course, curriculum and other things. It's wide-ranging. It builds in some accountability that we have, then we have the ability to check in with progress and incremental progress. And that we can do that as a board in front of the cameras at a public board meeting. So that allows the public to see, you know, that we're holding our board and our administration accountable. We assess new initiatives and programming and services that are usually presented by our teaching and learning, our assistant superintendent. But we assess those different things, those programs, a new curriculum, this or that. And just in general, school policies, major things like mental health initiatives. We really just kind of get a good bead on what those are, air them out a lot, kind of get a lot of information, discuss them a lot, and figure out a plan to move forward.
Great, thank you. Patrick, things you'd like to add to Heidi's list of the responsibilities of the school board, the real responsibilities?
Sure. I think the one that leaves to mind is trying to make sure you are, on the one hand, taking in information to make a good decision, but also making sure that you, as a board in a meeting, are communicating to the public in a way that they can understand what were the issues that were important to the board, where did they agree, where did they disagree, sort of the transparency and building of public trust so that people can see. And I heard someone say that our board has a good reputation of working together, and I'm very proud of that because there are times where we will flat out disagree with each other, but we still need to listen to each other. And then we need the public to understand that, one, we made a decision, and hopefully they have seen a study session or a board meeting where they've sort of been able to see some of that deliberative discussion, but also that they understand that we've made a decision, we've handed the reins then on to the administration to try and do their best to effectuate that decision. And, you know, we have some oversight as well that I think, you know, our story tends to be, you know, our one employee is the superintendent. And so we take the hiring or review of the superintendent very seriously. Like Heidi said, the board is involved in strategic goal-setting, and that's a process that we're engaged in really year-round because by the time you get to the school year, you want to have the goals in place for some time so people know what to expect. But you need to refine those for the next time around. So we're always looking at that. And then those are hopefully your guideposts to reviewing and talking with, okay, here's a new decision, here's a new issue that's come up. Okay, well, how does that fit in with our goal on excellence and in staff leadership? Or how does that fit with our goal in well-being and belonging? You know, those are the sorts of things we need to be able to go back and forth and talk about. But so having that goal and then making sure you're having a good communication with your community about what your decisions are and then communicating well and listening to each other.
Great, thank you. Chase, do you have some additions to this list in terms of the responsibilities?
Yeah, I'll share a couple thoughts. So in our school district, and I think in other places I've worked, there's always conversation about governance versus management and the important factor that, in fact, that school boards really do operate and function in that world of governance. And then, as was indicated before, the school boards hire the superintendent to provide direction and leadership to all the district administrators and the building administration, which then trickles into the classroom, which really is the main event. And it's important for both administrators and school board members to keep in mind that what happens in that classroom and that engagement between teachers and students is the main event. That's a term I use oftentimes. It's why we show up every day, and it's our products and services that we're delivering, and we need to do it in an effective and efficient manner and be responsive to what our customers are looking for within our community. So I think it's really important to leverage for school board members to have confidence in and leverage the experience of their superintendents and also all the decades' worth of experience that the administrative team and the leadership teams within a school district have. If you just take Kristi and myself, two neighboring adjacent, joined school districts, we have 70 years of experience in the field of education. And it's important to leverage that for school board members to understand that their leaders have seen a lot, they understand not only the surface level, but have probably navigated missions in their careers that go three to five levels deep of whatever it is that finds our way, its way to us. And I think that separation is really important. I think that will help ensure the continuance of a successful school district, and I think it'll help school board members have way more fun and enjoy that work. And it really should be fun, and as should administrative work and any work in education. And if it isn't, then it becomes very heavy and laborious, and it can just take the joy out of it. We have to keep the joy for the kids. That's why we show up every day.
Thank you, thank you. Christine, do you want to add some items as well?
Oh, my colleagues named a lot of really important things, governance, strategic planning, policy, budget, superintendent review. I would probably also add in functioning as a team, advocating for public education. I think as a school board member, one of our responsibilities, and I see our board members doing this all the time, they're down at the Capitol, they're working with our local legislators. It's a really critical role. We have wonderful people down in the Capitol who may not always know what it is like or the impact of the decisions, how they play out for students in classrooms. And I think board members are, it's an essential role for all of us to work together with our local legislators and work across the aisle and work together so that we have, we know we have common goals for our kids, and so that everybody understands the impact of those decisions and how they play out in a school. And we have, we actually have a group that works, an advocacy group, and our board members, many of them sit on those, and we frequently invite our legislators out and have coffee and just be connected to each other, and that's a critical role.
Thank you. The four of you have put together a very comprehensive description of what a school board member does and what you're looking for as school board members coming up. So let's get down to the nitty-gritty, district by district. Kristi, let's start with Orno. What are the priorities, the current priorities of the Orno Public Schools and School Board?
We have a strategic plan that has three main goals. We believe in whole-child education, and that is scholarship is first. Obviously, our kids need to walk across that stage and have those skills and competencies for the next phase of their life. But we also believe that character and connectedness are equally important in this world, that our children know how to make good decisions that lead to happy lives and that they can be, that they're connected to each other, that they live in and are connected to their broader community, that they participate in forums, that they grow up and want to be a part of forums like these, that they are, that those elements are equally important. And so those are our main priorities, and our board members, I would say, live those out as well, whether in terms of connectedness, I see them, I think community engagement is significantly important for our board members, and we see that all the time in their work. I also think that character in terms of being a trustworthy, a person of integrity, somebody that people can come to, and that they are viewed as listening and open and working as a team member. So I think all of those things, in terms of key issues that are facing us as well, I would say, budget is always something that's challenging. And this year isn't any different, maybe a little bit more challenging. And so I think trying to wade through, sometimes there's a lot of noise out there, and I think for board members, that's really critical to be able to rise above and focus on local student outcomes. But that state funding and the state budget challenges impact schools. And so for our board members, that's a, it's a huge issue. It's a huge issue, I would say, across all four of our districts as to how do we navigate really tight budget times with demands. Our kids don't need less, they probably need more from us as adults and more for us to pour into them. So how we navigate that is really important. I also feel like we're in this place of kids having, you know, just the need for emotional wellness, and how do we help our students become focused, I would say, well as adults, well-being and thriving adults? And then at the same time, I would say, the last thing, when I think about a pressure, is that we live in a very technical world now, and so helping kids both navigate the technology that's at their fingertips. And I'm not just talking about social media now and phones, it's also artificial intelligence. And that's going to need to be a skill that kids have, and how are we teaching them how to be good digital citizens and digital discerners of how to use these kinds of incredible advances? Every day, I'm amazed when I look at what artificial intelligence, what those, I would say, both gifts and challenges. And our kids need to know how to both use that and use it wisely.
Excellent, thank you. You did a great job of both addressing, these are the priorities, and then these are the challenges we're facing as well. So Patrick, let's hear about Minnetoka. What are the priorities of the school district and what are some of those challenges, hot-button issues?
Well, see, I'll try and answer that in a straightforward way. You know, I was looking at my other screen here at our multi-page set of board goals. I'm not going to read them to you, but I'll give you the top line, is we're always looking at excellence and well-being, connection and belonging, that's some of those points that Christine already mentioned about the mental health and how our students are going to interface with the world around them. We want people to succeed in our schools, and we just don't think you can really do that if you don't feel like you're connected to Minnetoka Schools in some way. And so that's a constant overall goal, which bleeds into all sorts of things, like how do we do that? All of our principals see our board goals, and they come back to us with reports on how do we integrate those goals into our projects for the year? What's our theme for the year? What are we doing to help advance that? And it'll look different, you know? It's not a cookie cutter. We're not going to ask the same thing out of K through 3 as we are out of 10 through 12. You know, it's a very different experience, and we need to be aware of that as well. You know, excellence and innovation and student learning and support, always being there, trying to be a leader in things like, yes, the Read Act came through, a focus on literacy. We feel like we've been a few years ahead of the Department of Education, what's needed for that, and we're trying to always be ready to take over the next step. I apologize if you're a barking dog in the background, that's one of those things I can entirely prevent here in my house. So, and then, you know, excellence in leadership and organization support. We always need to make sure, I mean, it's a personnel business. You know, when we look at our budgets, it's mostly salaries by, you know, overwhelming majority is the cost of actually putting the educators in that main event that Chase talked about. And we need to be there for them as well. The belonging isn't just for the students, the belonging is for our teachers and administrators who feel like they are supported because we want to keep attracting the top-tier educators and we want to keep retaining them. And so being able to understand, and that's as simple as, you know, this job is the first time I was involved in labor. job is the first time I was involved in labor negotiations. You know, you have a new role that you might not think about when you're having to talk about how to, how to negotiate with the various collective bargaining groups, including the teachers, including the paras, including the, you know, principals and so on. So you need to be able to work through those processes to support your, your teachers and your leaders, just as well as you need to make sure, what are we doing to make the calendar workable for professional learning? What are we doing to make the calendar, calendar workable? We, we completely rejuggled our middle level schedule this year so that we could meet some more of our goals. We've had a long project for 20 years of language immersion in the schools that had some consequences for the middle, middle level that we needed to work through about, are they all getting the same experiences? They're all getting the access to social, emotional learning, those sorts of things. And so, yeah, there, we're always focused on those things. And then the last thing we're really focused on is our facilities. We're overdue for a facilities improvement. We have a bond referendum on the ballot this year. It's a no net tax increase bond referendum. We spent about a year and a half of work into what are the real needs and then what would be the real costs of those needs? And then even in the past six months, can we afford to do any of them in the current climate? And so we spent a lot of work on that. I'm excited for the opportunities that it brings us, but you know, bond referendums aren't always a, you know, a fait accompli, it might not happen. So we're, you know, we're hoping our community will support us in that effort as well.
That's great, thank you. So you tucked in some challenges there along with the priorities. Any other challenges you want to throw out, hot button issues in Minnetonka?
I'll just second the, the many comments about budget. I mean, it's, it's critical. You know, Minnetonka has been fortunate over the years where we were able to grow through open enrollment and we had a long period without budget cuts and that ended in the last three years where we've, you know, we, we were, we've capped our enrollment at about 11,200 right now and we're, and so we, we don't have the ability to really continue to grow out of our budget problems. And now it's been a matter of, okay, we've had to tighten our belt, continue to, we've put, I think, three million of budget cuts on the, on the table in the last few fiscal years and I think we're stable for now, but we ought to keep an eye on that. And that's the same conversation, that challenged the, and now related to the challenge others have talked about with, working with the legislate, legislature. I agree with everything we've said about talking to your legislators and talking across the aisle and making sure, a big part of that is repeated conversations because even legislators who are entrusted positions of leadership in St. Paul may not fully understand the issues as well as we think they do or they think they do. So bringing them out into the community to talk to us in the schools and making sure they understand that, you know, that the bottom line is, is a, is a truly big problem and we need their partnership, not just this year, not just for cost of living increases, but every year, because that's the nature of the project.
Thank you, very helpful comments. Chase, priorities for the Wayzata Public Schools and challenges?
Well, trying not to duplicate too much of what our colleagues have shared here already. I would just emphasize many of those points. Budget is an ongoing concern. I oftentimes share with those I'm speaking to that public schools in Minnesota, maybe across the nation, operate with a, not a very good business model because we only control one side of the accounting ledger and that's expenditures. And we're at the mercy of others to determine what our revenues are going to be. So we have very limited capacity to have an impact on that. And I think that puts us at a real disadvantage when we're oftentimes challenged to have an organizational design model that's reflective of successful organizations across many sectors. And in fact, our vision statement has been somewhat aligned to an organizational design model that I resonated really well with, that we designed our, a vision statement really to challenge us to take a look at three main buckets. And regardless of whatever your endeavor might be, we all have products and services, we all have operations and we all have customers. And in order to be excellent with the delivery of whatever your endeavor is, you have to achieve excellence in all of those. And it's a little bit different in a business model where you probably differentiate into one or the other to compete in that niche, but we're a little bit different than that. And we think that by focusing on those three things, again, I think it's hard pressed to think of any organization or any type of enterprise that doesn't have those three main buckets in some form or fashion. And that's really important. I think the challenge is, is, you know, as more politics gets intertwined into public education and, and perhaps into many things, it becomes more complex and complicated and serves in many ways as somewhat of a distraction, taking us away from our core mission, which for us is excellence for each and every student. And I think collectively, I so admire what our teachers do and what educators in general do, but until we as a country and as maybe individual states can get our act together and figure out how to work together and take away the political divides and all the division that we continue to navigate through, everything is going to continue to be challenging. It could all be so good and it requires that we take a look at it from every level so that we can help ensure and maximize opportunities for students to start kindergarten at the best possible place that they can and to make sure that we're responsive to accept them where they're at and how we can help get them launched because how you start makes a big difference. So I'm hoping that collectively we can maybe nationally, hopefully even internationally, get our act together and start focusing on the difference-making activities and things that are going to move the needle and quit being infatuated by distractions and things that are, are not significant or substantive.
Thank you, thank you. Heidi, West Talka Schools, priorities, challenges?
Well, we're in the middle of a crunch construction season. We're on the other side of what Patrick was talking about. We, we are, we're lucky enough to have the community support to get a referendum going and we're doing a lot of building this summer. And so a challenge right now is, well, not only just like making sure that what needs to be open is open, but also it's, it's kind of a continuation of something that I've been trying to push for more of, which is consistent community engagement and communication. I, I feel like we can always do a better job of that and I know that there's a need, a desire for that. Not everybody is able or willing to show up to a board meeting, but they want to know what's going on. And I'm always trying to figure out how, you know, working with our communications people, how can we best inform our parents and our students about what's going on? Along with that, a challenge that I'd like to see part of, a part of the priorities that we've baked into one of our priorities for stakeholder engagement is, is an increasing involvement of student voice. I've, I've talked to other school board members in other districts who have been very active in this and I, and I'm really intrigued. I, I think that's a great way to go and that's, and we could always do more of that in figuring out ways to incorporate more student voice. You know, and trying to add on to what other people have talked about. But one, one challenge for West Talka is, is the, it connected with budgets, it's, it's long-term financial planning, it's, it's figuring out what we're going to need in the future, it's stable and in, trying to stabilize enrollment growth. That's, that's, that's always a question mark, that's something that we work hard to do. We have, you know, we have very close neighboring districts, we all kind of compete for students and that's, and, and all of the districts are great and we have, and by figuring out ways to distinguish ourselves as sort of a, of a small school with big school opportunities, that's, that's always been kind of a, an ongoing goal for us and, and figuring out how to do that better.
I think what we need to do is to pivot to audience questions at this point to make sure that some of those voices are heard. So Leslie, do you have some questions that have popped up in the chat? And this is a great time for the rest of you to put questions into the chat.
I had to find myself to unmute myself. So the only question that's in the chat as of this moment is what impacts do you see from cuts to the Department of Education?
At the federal level, I'm assuming?
Yes, I'm assuming the federal level too.
Okay. Who would like to address that first?
I can start with that. I would say it's a bit too early to tell because it's such a recent happening or occurrence. You may have heard that there was a withholding of much of the federal funding that was going to be distributed to public education across the country. And I do believe that's all been released now, or I maybe should use the term all cautiously, I'm not sure of that, but I think there was a release of that and fortunately, there was not similar conversation about the special education funding because that is the big component part of federal funding that comes to public school districts across the nation. But there were some questions about some of the title funding and other categorical funding that was on hold and Kristi may have some other insight or Heidi or Patrick as well, but those are a few thoughts that come to mind for me, but we're monitoring it closely. The state and local levies that Minnesota school districts have are the primary source of revenue for public ed, which I guess in circumstances like this is a positive. And if there, you know, is an impact, it, it isn't the biggest part of our funding, but to lose it all in the event that were to happen, I would say that would be devastating to most districts in many ways because then it would have to come from those local funds or state funds.
Thank you, Chase. Heidi, Christine, Patrick, do you have some things you'd like to add to that, the impacts of the, Christine?
I would echo everything that Chase said and the fact that we're still waiting to understand what it means. I think now that the funding for this year has been released, I, I think sometimes it feels like you're a bit on pins and needles for the future. And then what is the direction? There's been a lot of frankly confusing direction. And now I think the concern would be without the federal department, then where will that direction come from? So that, that would be just my two cents.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to add, I think it, you know, none of us had the crystal ball and there's been certainly a lot of people who could probably make a good living trying to predict what this administration is going to do and when and be, all of them be wrong. So we're, we, we just have to keep our eye on the main project and so long as the, you know, the, the funds that got withheld, we had support to push through our, our trade groups and our legislators and every representative and, and that was something we were able to re-secure. But I think we just need to keep an eye on what the administration says and then what they actually do and just make sure that they follow through with their commitments. And if they don't, then we're back to talking to our community. But as of now, I think those impacts have been at least delayed for another day and we'll have to keep our eye on it.
Would you like another question?
Go ahead.
How can citizens best advocate for our schools, especially at the state level?
Hi, everybody, I'd love to answer. I don't know who that's directed at, but I have some thought.
Go ahead, Anne.
Hi, everybody, sorry, I know, I don't even know where you are and if I'm like muscling over Chase or anything, but I will say, I was at the university, so I'm sorry I'm late, but I will say that we have, for those of you that don't know, I'm a state senator and I'm not on education, finance or policy, although I sit next to Senator Kunisch and Senator Swazinski and know that they're huge advocates for public schools. What I will, just my two cents, is I love it when my schools come talk to me. I think that's important for school districts, for parents, for superintendents, for board members, all those things to come and talk to your individual legislators to make sure that you're really heard and your concerns are being addressed. Make sure you talk to the members of the committees. So absolutely come talk to me or Senator Westland or Senator Swazinski, whoever your senator is and your House member, of course, but make an extra effort to set up an appointment or testify at a hearing. Just, I want to say, speaking directly to the committee members will kind of leapfrog you to the front of the line. I can advocate that I really trust Mary and Steve to do what's best and I know they will, but individually, that, that extra step is going to be really worth it. And Chase Anderson, I'm sorry we haven't connected since I got re-elected, but I certainly want to do that very, very soon. But that's, that's my two cents. Your individual legislatures, legislators are important, but really talking to the committee members and the committee chairs is, you know, because like my committee members are, I mean, my, I remember meeting with Orono School Board and they're asking me things to ask Senator Kunisch, well then I have to ask Senator Kunisch and then I have to get back to them and it's telephone, that game that we played when we were kids. So if you can use your legislator to leverage a meeting with the chairs, I think that's something more people should be doing.
And for the, the representatives from the school systems, are there ways that you have found that you and members of your communities can best advocate? Anything in addition to what Anne has just said?
I could jump in. In Orono, actually I had coffee with Anne. Hi Anne. You know, we act, we have an advocacy group, I think most public schools do, and we take new members from the community, it's not just board members, it is community members. If you're interested and passionate about public education and advocating, that group will go down to the Capitol, they will meet with our representatives, we have, we'll get together for coffees, we invite our representatives out to school and they can meet with parents there. It's just a way that we help facilitate the meeting so people, to Anne's point, you get to hear directly from parents. And I, and I do think it's very different sometimes how maybe legislation can play out in an urban setting compared to a suburban setting and those, the impacts or compared to a rural setting. And I think it's important and I found our local representatives, as I mentioned before, really open and wanting to understand the impact and wanting to hear from parents. So I, I think there are lots of avenues, I would say with, in any school, there's some kind of an advocacy group that's working and that would welcome the more people involved. When we go down to the Capitol, we bring the whole group and as many people who can come and we would love to have more.
Anyone else wish to comment on that?
I don't think I have too much to add to that, I appreciate the inputs of others. I think it, it's important for us to continue to relationship build and stay in communication with our legislators. I think it's, you know, an ongoing challenge when the, there are increasing needs of students. Every community has a little bit of a different set of needs as well. And to find all of the right aspects to be responsive to from the legislative perspective is really difficult, I'm sure, because I know there are a lot of people coming to Anne and others with their hands out looking for funding. And sometimes it kind of feels like superintendents and/or maybe board chairs or other board members are always asking for more money. You know, there's a reason for that because we haven't been able to keep up with inflation and those who track public school funding have probably seen some of the trend lines where there would be a significantly higher amount of per student funding if it had kept up with inflation over the last 10, 15, 20 plus years. It's difficult for us because the, as I said before, the business model doesn't add up when we don't have an ability to increase revenues to match increases in costs. So it's not uncommon for healthcare insurance. So it's not uncommon for healthcare insurance, transportation, any number of other things to go up by seven percent. And if we get, you know, one and a half to two and a half or three percent even on the formula, it's still a bad business model because we're still under inflation and it's an ongoing challenge. So the point I'm making is I think as, and Anne could affirm or refute this, I guess, but I think hearing from a variety of constituents across the spectrum is probably most helpful rather than just us whiny superintendents who are always looking for more money to make more things happen in our districts. We try not to come across that way, but I could understand how sometimes maybe it could feel that way. But I think getting a variety of people involved in connecting and providing their insights and advocating for and supporting public education is really very important. Our kids are the most important resource we have in the state. If we want to keep them here, we should educate them well and then create wonderful opportunities for their futures right here within Minnesota.
So I would just love, I would love to just add something. Kristy, I didn't see you up in my corner, so sorry. Hello. I do appreciate meeting with my individuals' boards and meeting with Kristy and her team was so great because my kids didn't go to that school district. You know, Hopkins has a really active program. I have to say, I know a lot about Wayzata because my kids and my grandkids went there. But it is good for you to reach out, whether from, you know, if you have children who are in special needs programs or if you have any, any group, but then also your elected board. Then what I, I think what I would recommend, and Kristy, we didn't do this, is you did ask me to ask Senator Koenish a question. I asked it of her and she gave me an answer. And I was a little flat, like dumbfounded, like I don't have the expertise to push back, right? So it had to do with that elective that you guys were talking, remember you had the whole, you know, matrix out. So what I'm going to tell you all to do, and I missed, I know some of you, I miss the introductions and I'm probably just butting in here, but use your legislators to get a meeting with the chairs. So I do this all the time with Senator Dibble, with Senator Friends, with others. If there's a group, because I don't have expertise in those areas. So if there's a group that I care about and I want to help, Mary Koenish is going to take a meeting with me and I'm going to bring whoever it is with. And then I'm going to hear the interaction between the superintendent or the board members or the parents or whoever. And I'm going to hear that and probably won't have a real active part in that meeting other than getting it set up and then learning from the discourse. What I, what I know a hundred percent for sure is every legislator has a limit to their expertise and what they know. So we all kind of sift into our areas where we learn things. I certainly care so much about public education because my parents were teachers. I'm a teacher, all that. And I specifically care a lot about public schools, but I, I'm not as well-versed. You know, when I asked Mary that question and she answered, I didn't really know where to go with it. So use your legislators, request that they set up a meeting with the chairs and then both the House and the Senate, and then ask them to attend because there's opportunity for your legislators to learn more and to be part of the back and forth for me is just so valuable. So that, I promise that's the last time I'm going to talk, but I just really appreciate you letting me jump in there.
Okay, we're gonna, we have two questions that involve student involvement and kind of combining them. How do you consider student voices during school board meetings and work sessions? Which is somewhat related to the question of how do you plan to keep, help keep students? I'm sorry, how can students best impact the school district when it comes to the school board and best ways to be involved? So that would be involving students in the decisions of the board or informing the board.
And this will be our last question, I hate to say, looking at the clock. Who would like to start in responding to that?
I can start. I, I, I'm really interested in this. I would love to see more of this in our district. I would love to encourage students to come to school board meetings if they have an issue. There's, there's time for public comment at the beginning of every meeting. I would love to hear from you if you want to connect with a school board member in person or, or via email. All of our contact information is, is on the school website. So this would be a situation if you have a question or a concern or you'd like to see some sort of initiative started, that would be the way, that would be the best way to start, I think.
Thanks.
If I, if I can just add, from our perspective, you know, we've been doing a lot with student voice. We're doing a new pilot program on having students actually at the board table. We spent a lot of time on student voice as a, just another example of listening to our community because obviously they're, they're important consumers of, of what you're doing. You want to hear how, how, what you've done affects their day-to-day. But they're still, you know, you're still talking about children, so you can't overextend that. And they don't have the power to vote unless someone changes state law about that. But we, we're going to have students at the board table. We're going to have them training how to go about soliciting input from their peers. And the what, what we've done is we actually have a public policy class and we gave that class an assignment of look at some of our, look at some models for student engagement with the school boards around the country and come back with some recommendations. And we got some fantastic recommendations and we're rolling some of them out this year and we're really excited about it. So that's, that was sort of two levels of student voice, right? We got students involved in thinking about the problem, thinking about what's important for them and how they would interact with the board. And then having some back and forth between them and just the, sort of the public policy question overall as to what should their role be and how should you take in, take in that voice? And then there's always ways outside of an actual board meeting, certainly just making sure the students are aware that the board is meeting and that there's an, an item of interest that's going to be on the agenda of meeting or a study session and that they are open for all. Students don't realize they can just show up and sit in the gallery and listen. And not every student will care to, but some might. And so just making sure you're part of that communication, you know, have a, have, have a principal who likes to use social media and remind the students that there's a board meeting coming up. And you'd be surprised what sort of reactions you get.
I just would add really quickly, in Orno, in addition to a couple of the things that have already been mentioned, we also invite our students over once or twice a year, sometimes more, but before a board meeting. And we actually all have pizza together. And it's informal. It's really fun. Kids generally have done a survey with their peers first and come over and talk about both hot topics, issues of interest to our students. And, and I think it's probably the fa, the favorite thing that the board does.
Chase, do you want to address it from the Wayzata perspective?
Yeah, I think it's always good to continue finding ways to collect student feedback and input about the quality of the student experience they're having as well as the academic and activities program. So anything that we can do to help strengthen that is always important. It kind of an indirect route also is to not underestimate the interconnectivity between students and their principal and the fact that the principals are in direct connection to the superintendent. And of course, superintendent's in direct connection to the school board. There are some ways to channel it, you know, through in that regard as well to help school board members stay apprised as to what's happening within the, the district and within the, the school buildings. We do meet with the high school student council typically once a year. There may be opportunities to expand that. We don't have a model where one individual student is on the school board or who is the official representative of the school board. But I think to broaden it out and to create opportunities for lots of students to have an opportunity to have an impact and for school board members to have a good feel for how students are feeling about what we're delivering is, is really an important thing to keep in mind.
Thank you. Thank you all. And I, I hate to draw this too close because we feel like we're actually just getting started here. There are a number of questions that have come up in the chat and they will be saved because the topics that were raised tonight and the additional topics we did not get to, we'll have an opportunity to come forward at our candidate forums this fall. So first of all, I'd like to thank our guest speakers who were generous with their time and shared some wonderful information with us tonight across the four districts. Thank you all so much. If we could all clap on mute, you will receive the appreciation of our audience. Just a reminder that the League of Women Voters will be hosting candidate forums this fall for each of the three districts holding school board elections. So watch your local school district and the league's website for details. I can throw a couple dates out in advance. On Monday, September eighth, the Minnetoka School Board Candidate Forum will be held at 7:00 PM at the Minnetoka High School Arts Center. On Thursday, September eighteenth, the West Tonka School Board Candidate Forum will be held at 7:00 PM at the Gillespie Center. And on Tuesday, September thirtieth, the Wayzata School Board Candidate Forum will be held at seven o'clock at Plymouth City Hall. So questions for these candidate forums may be submitted by the public in advance via the website or at the forum themselves. The forums will be livestreamed and recorded and placed on the league website for community viewing. So we will have additional opportunities. Filings opened, I believe, today. So we're just starting to get a sense of how many candidates are stepping forward for these positions. Thank you all for the work that you do as school board members, as superintendents to serve our communities and to support our kids and really promote the growth of great, active citizens of America. So great evening. Thank you, one and all.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Thanks for putting it on.
Our pleasure. Thank you for coming, Patrick. Thank you so much, Chase. Thank you, Christine.